So I will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order and ask either Brian or or Steve to call the role.
Certainly, and if there's anybody I don't see on my screen, just let me know. So I'll start with Ms. Jordan Byron.
President.
We might have lost Steve.
I lost Steve. I'll continue.
Let him come here.
Mr. Bryce?
Present.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Schulman?
I think I froze, Brian.
Yeah, I got you. And Ms. Wells?
Here.
All right, you have a forum.
Wonderful. Okay, so we now have the continuation of the public hearing for number 2024-32 SP. Angela Luntan, 5 Blackberry Lane, it's District 5, Block 14, Lot 134. And it's a special permit for rest home use, a report, a recommendation of action.
So Ms. Wells, I'm not seeing applicant on. I don't know if you'd like to perhaps take some of the other items before this. I'm not seeing her on.
No, that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
I don't see her on either. Um, okay, so we'll review an action on items on applications. This number 2025-10, 8-24 referral, City of Norwalk, 12 Lubrano Place, Storm Water easement report and recommended action. Who is here representing the City of Norwalk in this matter?
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Wilbur Jerron. I'm the Permit Engineer for DPW, and I'm here to speak on the item for 12 Lubrano Place.
Wonderful, thank you. Go ahead.
So, um, so the reason for the easement acceptance, um, there used to be a box culvert that went across the property at number 15 Olean, which the city owned. But it was a very difficult culvert for the city to access and maintain. So, um, when the property owner, the developer of 15 Olean proposed to construct a contractor's yard as part of that development, they agreed to reroute the city's drainage through the property 12 Lubrano, which they also owned. And they provided, uh, the city access to the new pipe, uh, in a situation that's easier to, to maintain. So, um, we're here today to, to try to, uh, uh, accept this new location of the pipe, uh, through 12 Lubrano, uh, for, for the city to continue to maintain and own, um, that storm drain. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Hey, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Jacob? Yeah, do you mind bringing up a map just to, um, highlight the easement on here? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the correct thing.
Yeah, I could bring up a, a map if I try to share my screen.
Thanks.
Should be able to see my screen now?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so specifically, I'm curious what the new easement is, or, um, if there were any existing easements. When I was looking at this map earlier, I, I wasn't sure what was, uh, an existing easement versus the, the newly proposed.
Yeah, that's a fair question. Um, so I'll highlight here, if you could see my cursor.
Yep.
Uh, this easement that I'm hovering over is the existing easement. This is where the box culvert used to cross on 15 Olean. Um, so as part of that development, they rerouted our drainage to where I'm hovering over now at 12 Lubrano. So this pipe segment did not exist before. Um, so as part of the development, the developer put it in and connected to this section of pipe which existed before. Um, so they essentially rerouted our drainage from 15 Olean through 12 Lubrano. So now we're seeking, um, acceptance of this easement right here for the city to access and maintain this pipe.
Thank you.
Obviously, the easement's been drawn up by the Law Department, right?
Uh, the easement was provided by the developer, which our Corporation Council did review and recommended acceptance of.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. I just want to make sure. Did, did you say that the easement on Lubrano was existing and decommissioned, and now you want to reactivate?
Uh, there was an existing easement on Lubrano, but it was for, uh, this pipe that goes up and down the page, uh, for 48, for 48 RCP. That easement is still in existence and, and we're looking to, to keep that easement. The easement that goes across from left to right, uh, did not exist before, and this is the new one that we're looking to include. Um, just to clarify, this easement that's more to the left of the screen, uh, labeled easement number six and seven, that was pre-existing. And, and we do have a pipe that's not shown here, but we do have drainage that goes through here. It used to go through 15 Olean, but now it's just going to continue to the right of the page and connect to our existing drain.
And so the purpose of this is to, for flood mitigation?
Uh, the purpose is to, for access. So, uh, when we used to cross 15 Olean, the elevation on 15 Olean was very high compared to 12 Lubrano. So the box culvert was very deep, uh, about 14 feet deep for. Now this pipe is much, uh, uh, not as deep. So it's going to be much easier for our crews to, to get down and fix it. Shouldn't need any maintenance.
Okay, all right. Is this a prerequisite for construction?
It was in agreement with the developer 15 Olean. Typically, we don't allow, uh, people to, to develop, uh, over our existing drainage because we don't want to make it more difficult for the city to access it. But because they were willing to reroute it in an area that's going to be easier for the city to access, we were willing to, to agree to them to develop the property, uh, as part of, uh, disagreement to, to reroute our drain.
Okay, um, once again, what, what is the property? Is this a new development?
The, the original property was 15 Olean. But then they rerouted our drainage at 12 Lubrano, which, which wasn't part of, it, it didn't, they didn't develop 12 Lubrano. Um, uh, so that was an existing lot. They just, uh, rerouted drainage through there. Um, because the owner had, he, he owned both lots, so he was able to, uh, grant access through another property.
Okay, so this is just laying down infrastructure for when you do, when, when a developer does want to wreck something.
That's right.
I'd move approval of the easement.
All second.
Okay. Good, is there a second?
Yes, I, I'll second.
Second?
That was me, Chapin.
Okay, good.
Oh, looks like we might have lost Galen.
Raise of hands?
Raise a hand?
Yeah, I think it's raise of hands.
Okay.
Okay, good. Look, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
I, I think I see that. I saw that, Angela.
Ms. Wells, do you want us to want to go to the, the special appropriation so that we can get Darren out of here and then we can go back to 5 Blackberry?
Sure, that's a good idea.
Bye.
Yeah, next then is 2025-11, Special Appropriation, City of Norwalk, 6 Butler Street. It's acquisition of property, and we are to report and recommend action. You want to proceed, Darren?
Great, thank you, uh, Commissioner. Um, can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you. So, um, this is a project, uh, this acquisition, 6 Butler, was originally went through an approval process in 2024. The funding source for, uh, the acquisition was ARPA funds, a portion of the city's allocation of, uh, ARPA funds from the federal government. Uh, it was a requirement under that grant program that those funds be obligated, meaning, um,
We're having trouble. Seem to be coming in and out.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you sound good there.
So it's an obligation under the ARPA program that those funds be obligated before the end of December 2024. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I think it's on Galen's end, Darren.
I think it's just Galen.
All right, uh, and, uh, it was not, um, going to be, uh, possible to, um, enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the owner of 6 Butler by that date. And so in order to avoid losing those ARPA funds that were slotted or scheduled or allotted, allocated to fund the 6 Butler acquisition, those funds were reallocated towards funding a portion of our, uh, annual, um, uh, road paving construction contract. Uh, so annually, we spend about somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 million to $7 million paving roads throughout Norwalk. And so what we did is we did an amendment to that contract for the 2025 paving, uh, uh, period to, um, to, to, to allocate those funds so that they would not be lost, uh, to, to the, to the paving contract. With the idea that we would come back through an approval process to seek a special appropriation of capital funds, being the same amount of funds that would have been allocated to that portion of the paving contract to support the funding of the acquisition. So the net result is that there is a uh, an effective zero, uh, uh, financial consequence to the city. It's just exchanging one funding source, ARPA, for another funding source, which is a capital appropriation. But as a technical matter, we need to go through the formal approval process. We started with BAT. We're now at, uh, planning, and it will go on to, excuse me, the Common Council. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Move approval of, uh, funds?
I do have questions, but okay, it seems like it's already moved, so.
Well, you can still ask a question even after it's been moved and seconded.
Okay, good. I, I wasn't sure if I closed it out. Uh, this is a formative question. My apologies.
Is there a second to the motion? We might as well get it moved and seconded. Okay, Tammy seconds. Okay, go ahead, Chapin.
Yeah, um, so I recall this site came in front of us a number of months ago, um, as a affordable housing, um, proposed project. Uh, what happened to that project? I, I'm not sure where that landed, but it seems to not be going forward.
So, uh, I, 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 I am familiar with, um, that project. That project is not going forward. The, um, the developer has done affordable housing projects in Norwalk. Um, they, um, they have decided to look to a different property for their affordable housing project. Um, I think he also understood that, uh, that property provides, um, um, pretty favorable access for the city, uh, to, to its park, uh, from that, uh, adjacent street, uh, uh, forgetting the name of the street, but, uh, um, but, uh, currently there's only one point of access or circulation through the park. And, uh, that would prevent, present, uh, a second or alternate, uh, point of access to allow, you know, effectively future reconfiguration and utilization of the park. So I think, uh, um, they, they were considering, as, as, uh, as many times will happen, a developer will enter into a conditional contract with a property owner to see if they can get a site plan approved. Um, and sometimes those die on the vine, so to speak. Um, and, and that's a similar situation to what happened here.
And then I, I saw, um, in the request that, um, there was a number of options being explored for you. So I think you just indicated one of, like, possibly an entrance. Um, I saw another one mentioned there was, uh, for parking. I was just curious, um, and maybe this goes to the explanation you gave a little while ago, um, like how, um, parking or an entrance, uh, became like an option that seemed suitable for the site.
So I, I know it's, you know, kind of a conceptual matter, uh, that that was part of the, the, the presentation that, uh, but I, I, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's currently a solid plan for exactly how that property is going to be integrated from a functional standpoint.
Okay.
Into the park. It's just understood and known that that property is part of the overall planning of, 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 of that park uh, in general and, and envision and how, how it could be made, uh, more functional. Um, I, and I don't want to mislead anyone on, on what it actually be used for. Um, but I, I think that at a minimum, that was context to why the acquisition was important. Um, unfortunately, I'm working with a little bit of a deficit here because, uh, this is, I typically wouldn't be presenting something like this. I'd only be answering the legal questions. Um, this was a, a project of Jessica Vanaschek, who has since moved on from the City of Norwalk. Um, and, and there's, there's really no one else at this point to speak to the issue. So I, I'm, I'm doing my best. But I, I don't have, I'm not privy to all the business, internal business discussions of why and how this property would be utilized, but I've given you kind of the Reader's Digest version of what I understand of the debate.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for this information.
Okay. Could I make a comment or, uh, to Mr. Callahan? Um, I think if, you know, the city wants to acquire this, that's fine, but I'd just like to go on the record that I would think open space would be a lot more useful than a driveway because Stepping Stones has a driveway out onto Burr Street. So there is more than one way in and out, and it already exists.
Yeah, and again, you know, I, I, I maybe, I may have spoken slightly out of turn. I, I know it's, it's, it's being acquired to, to facilitate access. I may in my mind be thinking a driveway when in fact access means something else. Um, but it's, it's, I, I know that there's no, there, there certainly is no design plans, um, that i- implicate this particular parcel. Uh, even in the conceptual phase, it's just, it's, it's a parcel that's become available, uh, known to become available to the city, and, uh, it's considered a unique opportunity for the enhancement of the park, whatever that may be in the future. Uh, but I will convey that point to, um, to the mayor's office.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? For Mr. Callahan? If not, we have a motion on the floor to accept this. Oh, why don't we do a what roll call vote on this? Can, can you help us with that, Steve? Or would you do that, Brian?
Man, I can, I can do that quickly. Sure.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Uh, I'll echo what Tammy said before, and also, yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful. We have one more relatively small matter before we go back to the, uh, public hearing. That is Norwalk, uh, 2025-12, Norwalk Hospital Association, 34 Maple Street, modification to the hospital's sign manual for the Hottinger Garage Report and Recommended Action. Is, someone is here representing Norwalk Hospital?
Uh, yes, um, Sarah Myers and Nadine Landau.
Okay. Well, proceed.
Uh, so the purpose of this request is to amend the existing Norwalk Hospital's signage manual to include, um, two locations where the hospital would like to honor a donation made to, um, the foundations of New Vans Health Network from a donor who would like to, to name the garage, the existing parking garage. Um, they would like to add exterior non-illuminated dimensional letters, uh, to two locations on the existing structure, one at the very entrance. Yeah, would you like me to share my screen and show the proposal?
Yes, please do, do that.
Um, so location one, can everyone see? Um,
No, try sharing again, Sarah.
Did I miss it? Oh, one more click. It's, I always do that. Um, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Great, so this is the, um, this is as you enter, after you pull into the main entrance into the hospital, there's a, um, parking control gate um, for pulling a ticket to enter the garage, and the hospital would like to name the garage the Hottinger um, garage after this donor.
Hmm.
This is, this, uh, rendering represents dimensional letters, non-illuminated, um, uh, brushed stainless steel letters that would be stud mounted onto this brick surface of the building at this location. Um, in addition, they would like to, I'm just gonna, and this is a, an overview of, of where they are, um, uh, it, it's not visible from anywhere except the, the driveway as you enter. In the second location, I'm gonna scroll through the details, is just at the threshold as you, um, at the bottom of the first level ramp. Um, so this would be the surface. The cars that you see are the, you know, this is on the one levels, uh, the surface area, and then you kind of go down the ramp, and we just want to put the name again at the threshold as you enter the lower levels of the garage. Again, um, stud mounted, non-illuminated, uh, stainless steel letters directly mounted into the, the precast concrete. Uh, and so the purpose of this request is to add these to the, um, the approved sign manual that's on file with the city for for Norwalk Hospital. And once this is approved, then we would, um, proceed with, uh, for a sign, a sign permit application.
Um, I have a question for, uh, either Steve or Brian. Uh, is there anything in our regulations, um, that, uh, would, uh, forbid this or mitigate against it?
No, the, the purpose of, for the, you know, because the hospital's a pretty unique use and, uh, a unique property. So that's why they have a special signed manual. Same with like the mall is kind of the same approach. It's, it's just harder to, you know, apply standards to them as you same would like a typical business. So that's why they have a separate manual. So this would just be amending it, uh, assuming you think that the changes are appropriate.
And a, a question for, uh, Ms. Myers. Uh, I assume if and when, uh, the hospital merges, uh, that, uh, you'll come back to us with a changes to, uh, the sign manual to reflect, uh, uh, changes in, um, uh, name and, uh, management? Not, not necessarily the garage, but of the hospital itself?
Yeah, yes, of course. Um, at any, at any point in time that any of the other hospital signage would require changes due to a merger or name change or anything like that, yes, of course, we would come back and, and, um, revamp the existing sign ma- manual to reflect whatever changes would be made. This, I don't expect any, of anything in the future to impact this particular request. Um, this, these donations are permanent. And as long as the structure exists, these, this, this, these letters will exist.
Thank you.
Sure.
Quick question. Um, in the materials, I thought I saw a third location for this line. Is that still the case for what's proposed?
Actually, no, that location has been withdrawn. Um, after, after internal review, the foundation and the hospital decided that that location was, um, was, uh, unnecessary.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, are there any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Uh, I'll move approval of the, uh, change in the sign manual.
Okay, wonderful. Is, is there a second?
All second, Beth.
Okay, Chapin, second. Uh, let's do a roll call vote.
Certainly. Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Okay, also unanimous.
Okay, wonderful. Now we will go back to the, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will go back to the, uh, our public hearing because I see that Angela Valentine is here. Uh, that is, uh, 2024-32 SP, Angela Valentine, 5 Blackberry Lane, which is District 5, Block 45, Lot 134. And it's a special permit for a rest home use, report and recommended action. Now we are continuing the public hearing, as I understand this. Do you want to catch us up to where we are, Brian?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start you guys off. So, um, if you remember at your January 8th meeting, we had opened the hearing for this application. And there was a couple outstanding questions, um, that you had like, had wanted to get answered from, um, Ms. Valentine. Um, she has since, um, provided a proposed septic plan, um, to the Health Department, and then she has also prepared, um, revised floor plans, uh, based on some of the comments that, uh, we had put in our staff memo, um, to, to address those concerns. Um, so I did get in contact with, with Sean Duffy from the Health Department today, who was reviewing the septic plans. Um, he let me know that, uh, that Health Department would, would, would sign off on those plans, that they are acceptable for the Health Department for the proposed septic system. Um, so essentially what we're doing is, uh, we are, um, continuing the hearing, uh, for any public comment in relation to those, uh, those new documents having been submitted.
Okay, so this, so the continuation of the public hearing, as I understand it, only allows the public to speak on the new documents that have been received from.
If they've, yeah, if they've, if they've spoken at the previous meeting, then they can only speak on the new documents having been submitted. If they did not speak at the previous meeting, then they can speak on, um, any of the, the application, uh, materials.
Okay. So let us see if there is anybody who would, oh, your hand is raised, Chapin?
Yeah, I just wanted to call out that, um, I was not present at the January 8th meeting. I tried to re-watch it today. I, I did not get through all of it, so I think I have to, um, not be seated for this one.
Okay, so that means, let's see, one, two.
Still have six.
Yes, we still have six. We will seat Diana for, for this, for this matter. And we will, uh, go forward. If, if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak on this, our tradition is to allow you to speak as long as you want to, but you can only speak once. So please be sure that you say everything that you, uh, want to say in this one uh, opportunity to speak. Um, and as you know, if you've spoken before, you can only speak to the new materials that have been raised at this meeting. So is there anyone from the public here that would like to speak at this public hearing?
And if there are, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once. Um, and if you're doubling on a phone, you would hit star nine. Seeing nothing, Ms. Wells.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, one. And then Laura Levy did speak, so it just has to be related to the new material.
Hello, thanks, Brian. Yes, I did ask questions earlier. So my comments tonight have to do with the revised floor plan. I understand that two bedrooms in what I understood were the caretaker quarters or the resident quarters. But now those two rooms have simply been changed to rec rooms. And I'm curious how that satisfies any kind of assurance that those rooms would not be utilized as bedrooms in the future for the Valentines and their three children. That's it. Thank you.
Hey, is anybody else, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay.
Here, so.
There's, there's nobody, Brian?
Right, doesn't look like it.
Okay. So we will now, now the, the applicant has an opportunity to respond to the comments made in the entire public hearing. Do you have a response, Ms. Valentine? We can't hear you, though. I, I think you need to unmute.
She needs to turn up her volume, perhaps. She looks unmuted.
Can you turn up your volume?
Check your, yeah, it's not coming to Angela. Check your mic at the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, see if which mic input you have selected. You might need to just change it. There should be like a little carrot on the microphone that you can click, and then it'll say select a microphone. Might just need to change that. Still can't hear you. But she's gonna call in. Okay, hear you, Angela, if you're speaking. Angela, we can't hear you.
Now it's kind of a Twilight Zone experience.
No.
Does she have a landline?
Here, Angela, I can send you the public link with the phone number, and you might be able to call in and use that audio. Let's try that. On the agenda. Angela, I'm gonna email you the, the phone number. And you'll just need to call in. And then if you, once you're in, if you could raise your hand, that would let me know that that's you. So to raise your hand, you would hit star six once you're into the meeting, or star nine, excuse me. Hopefully you got me emailed, and then you can join the meeting through your cell phone. Pause the recording for now. All right, go ahead, Angela. Let's see if this works.
Hi, good evening, everybody. To all commissioners, I'm sorry for the delay. And we're here from 5 Blackberry Lane to get a special permit for rest, for rest home. It's, it's a long journey and our only goal is for the community service to take care of elders and disabled. And regarding the question of Ms. Lara, her comments regarding the recreation rooms, we cannot use that as a room for residents because of the state regulations. The state regulations is we cannot pass by the living room or dining room before going to the bathroom, and there is no access to bathroom that, to that room. So that's why we cannot use that. For sure, we will not do that for the, to add additional residence or room.
Now, in terms of the the approval of the septic system, where are we with that?
Go ahead, Angela. I'll let you answer.
Yeah, regarding the septic system, Sean approved that we can have three residents. But the septic plan is only for the future that if you want add more, but we said to him that we have the regulations we are following in the state.
So, Ms. Wells, yeah, so I spoke with Sean today, and he said, as proposed, the septic system that they've proposed would comply with the health code.
And that includes the apartment or the place where Angela's family will live as well as
Correct, based on the floor plans that they submitted, that the septic system proposed would, would comply.
Would comply. Okay. Okay, do the commissioners have any further questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
So looking at the floor plan, I see that you know, we've really eliminated two bedrooms. And so we have a family which has been represented to us as being two adults and three children living in a space with a kitchen, a living room, and one small room, which is labeled caregiver's quarters. Are, are they still planning on having five people living in this smaller, reduced space?
Yeah. Question.
It does seem it's possible to, you know, create a larger living quarters by changing the access in several areas, but that's would require a little bit of construction, but it could be done quite simply.
We can, we can do, make changes according to their suggestion or recommendation of the state. Is what is safe for us and safe for the residents.
But Angela, doesn't this health department, didn't Sean approve this based on the number of bedrooms? So if you add, if you change the space to add bedrooms, it would no longer be approved, the septic system would no longer be approved for the property. Correct?
Yeah.
So you can't add bedrooms?
No, we can't, people.
So you're gonna have, where are you, you and your children all gonna live?
In the apartment. I mean, in the quarters, the quarters place, or, yeah. Yeah.
How many bedrooms are there in that space?
We, all, all, all are girls. My kids are girls.
I'm sorry, Brian, I'm having a little bit hard time hearing the applicant. Couldn't, can you please repeat what you just said, Ms. Valentine? My, I guess, Galen, did you ask her where are her children going to live?
Yeah, so Angela, I think what they're, what they're essentially, they're asking is, based on this floor plan, you're proposing to have you and your family live within the caregiver's quarters, but as shown, there's only one bedroom to accommodate the whole family.
Yeah, but Brian, we are caregivers. We have to stay near the resident if one is working.
Right, so I guess they're just kind of asking about like the, the how it would work to have all five of your, of your family members residing within essentially one, one bedroom.
Well, I think there's a mistake on this floor plan because she's got two recreation rooms in their space. Is one of these recreation rooms supposed to be an additional bedroom?
Yes, yes.
Right, because you see that, right? That, that there's a mistake on there.
Would that be this one, Angela?
Yes.
Did Sean know about that as a bedroom, or did he think that that was a recreation room?
No, he knows it's a bedroom.
He knows it's a bedroom.
Yes.
Can you clarify how many bedrooms the septic system was approved for?
Um, three for the resident. And then we can live in the quarters area.
But what, how, what's the total number? You said three for the three for the rest home piece, and then how many for your quarters?
Two.
So that, that's five, okay.
At our, at our last meeting, your husband indicated that either you or he would be transporting residents to doctors' visits. It's my understanding from the state regulations regarding these facilities that there needs to be staff at the facility 24/7. Not necessarily trained staff like yourselves, but there does need to be someone there so that the residents are never left alone. I was wondering if you've made arrangement for that and built it into the budget that you submitted to the state.
Yeah, we can use the other resources like the access transportation. And we can have somebody, a private aide, to accompany them into their appointments if needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to run through one thing that, that concerns me just as a sort of you know. So you and your husband, each one of you would take a 12-hour shift. And you also work outside of the home and the, and the rest home with full-time jobs. Is that correct? Is that correct, Angela?
No, we're still working, but in the future that we have our own residents, um, we need, if we need to go, you know, we will be full-time for the rest home.
So you would be full-time for the rest home?
Yes.
Both you and your husband?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because the task of cooking and cleaning and doing laundry for three children and three rest home residents and working full, you know, that just didn't seem possible to me. But assuming that both you and your husband only have two hands. So you would work full-time.
We can also add on, you know, as other stuff that can come, they call it direct care. Um, but for you to know about group home, some of the group home, they have only one staff 24 hours for five days, and they are different on the weekends. So they stayed in the group home. So it will be, the operational will be different, but we will submit an while for the, apply for the license, we will get a recommendations from the state. But we can, according to state, we can hire a direct care to take care of the patient or the resident at night or day shift, or they can be Monday to Friday or weekend, as long as there's a 24-hour care for them.
Okay, and is there parking for an employee like that?
Yes. Yes, we did parking study visibility and they said that there is no problem regarding parking and also the state we met direct requirements for the parking.
How many parking spaces do you have?
Oh, we have two right now, but six cars can fit in the in the driveway.
So I, I have a question. So are, are, are both you and your husband qualified to dispense medicine, medication?
Yes, we are registered nurses and we know how to dispense medication. When it comes to dispense of medication, we have policies and procedures that we have to follow. And also for the narcotic medications, we can do, we do, the registered nurse, we do the narcotic medications, or we can bring it to the police station to bring the narcotic medications for disposal.
Right, and I think this answer, this question was answered the last time, so just refresh my memory. Are both of you like, are either one of you a dietitian? Like, since you are serving an elderly population, you have to be sensitive to their food intake?
We have to, that will be on during assessment, that we have to assess their allergies and their restrictions and their diet. So we have to, we have a month or 14 days menu for the resident that can be, you know, that needs to follow.
I am sorry, I didn't hear that last part. I, I didn't hear that last
Angela, can you repeat yourself?
Yes, I said we have prepared menus for the resident, we will follow during assessment, we have to know your allergies and the restrictions that are restrictions according to the doctor's recommendations. And then we have menus for 14 days or a month before, you know, the start of the month. So we have in place, we have policies and procedures to follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie, you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Bill. A couple of questions. So if the city has approved your septic system for a five-bedroom home and two of those bedrooms are in your apartment and the other three are in the house, what assurance do you give us that you will only maintain the three bedrooms for patients? Say, once your children move out, are you going to add more patients to your, to the apartment? Would you add another, you know, people to the apartment?
We're not adding additional residence rooms. During processing of getting a license in the state, they will give us the certificate, the license, and it will reflect their, how many residences we can take care of.
Even though initially, I believe the application from the state said you could have up to six patients, would they adjust it to three now? Would they adjust it to three now?
Well, is that, that, um. Six resident is from the Department of Social Service, that's not from the state.
Okay, so would you want to maximize what the Department of Social Services said to you? For the number they gave? No. So it would just be three patients?
Only three patients.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, if you do hire direct care for the patients. If you or your husband aren't there, or if they need extra care. Is that something that the patient is paying for, or are you paying for them, or the state?
We, we are responsible for that, not the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have, excuse me, I have a question, follow-up question. Um. With the application, there was documentation from the state of Connecticut. That seems to me clearly indicated that the financial feasibility of your project was based on six. Residents. I asked you that, I asked you about that the first time you were here a couple of months ago. Um, I asked you about it again at the last meeting, and I'm going to ask you about it again now. Um. The state is very actively concerned with people paying to be staying someplace and the financial viability of them. And the paperwork that you provided indicates that it is viable with six residents. And yet you are asking us to grant three. How do you reconcile that?
Mr. Richard, um, my answer for that is we have group homes that they have only two residents, they're so by.
But, uh, that's, that's not my question, my question is the state has said that, not me. Um, and I'm not comparing it to other group homes, the state is looking at the fact that you paid. Almost eight hundred thousand dollars for this house, you have to support it, you have to make capital improvements to it. And they are the ones that have decided that it's going to take six residents to make this viable. I'm sure there are places that only have one or two that are viable, but they're not the same circumstances as yours.
It, um, Mr. Richard, it's not, we only, we can also get a private patient aside from the Department of Social Service.
What? I, I don't understand what that means.
So I, I think she's saying that, um. If the social service refers to patients under their jurisdiction, she can also supplement her income by, by one of them being a private patient. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Johnson.
But what does that have to do with six?
They pay more, the private patient.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an answer for everything here, okay, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, the Department of Social Service knows that we will take private. Patients too. They're aware.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? The applicant?
Well. Sorry to go back, Galen, but I feel that. I'd just like a little bit more clarification. A patient is a patient. Yes, you might receive more from a private patient than you would from a state patient. But is your application. Predicated on one or the other type of patient? Do you understand the question?
What's your question?
I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't hear you, Angela.
What's your question, Tammy? Sorry.
Is, is your application. Predicated on the type of patient that you will have, whether they're private or whether they're state?
Yes, yeah, yes, but we haven't, uh, we have an application yet, yet to the state. Because we're waiting for the zoning.
Or so you have not yet applied with the state? There, there are two different agencies you apply to, the Department of Social Services and another. So you applied to the Department of Social Services and they approved your plan for six patients. But you haven't applied yet to the state. Whatever, what is it that?
Yeah, which, which agency is that, what they say, is that Rehabilitation Services? Senior Services?
Oh. No, the state that, um, oversee the nursing homes, assisted living. The Connecticut, the state of Connecticut, we need to, uh, but I got in touch with them already, but. It's one of the requirement is to have the zoning approval. And then after that, we have to do, uh, fire, the fire department needs to come and check the place. And then after that, uh, the state will come and visit the facility. And then review our, uh, policies and procedures and, um. They will give us that, if they can say no. Or yes, for the rest, for the rest, uh, house.
Okay, and that's another agency, not the Department of Social Services.
Yes. The state, from the state, it's not the Department of Social Service.
Hey, does anybody else have a question?
Isn't the Department of Social Services part of the state of Connecticut?
Yeah.
Yes, it, it's part of the, the state, but it's. It's a process, first is you have to get an approval from Department of Social Service, then zoning, and then the. State of Connecticut.
I, I think the question they're asking is what? What's the last agency within the state of Connecticut that you need to get approval from? So first is Social Services, then you come to the city to get their okay, and then you go back to the state, but what? What agency of the state is the final? Yes or no?
Yeah, the, um, the state of Connecticut that give a license to operate for the nursing home, assisted living in a group home. They're the one who's giving us the license to do it.
Isn't the state Health Department?
Yes.
It was my understanding that we could give zoning approval for three beds. And we could limit the zoning approval to the three beds, is that correct? That's my understanding.
Yeah, so, uh, our, our approval is based on, um, one, the parking. And then also they're limited based on the size of the septic, um. Limiting the, the, the rest home number of bedrooms.
Okay, does this seem sufficiently clear that we would, could move on to a motion to accept or de- or reject? This application?
Yeah, first, if there's no more questions, if you wanted to, to close the hearing.
Yeah, we would close the hearing. If there are no further questions, we'll close the hearing. And then we'll move on to a. A motion to either accept or reject. The application.
Uh, Galen, uh, I'd make, uh, a motion to, uh, reject. Um. Uh, we, we, we have some limited criteria under which this can be made. Uh, but one of them is access to public transportation. Um, and, um, this facility, uh, would not have, uh, access. Uh, to, uh, public, uh, transportation. Um, it's, uh, uh, quite inaccessible to public, uh, transportation. Think the closest, uh, uh, bus route is, um, on Route one twenty-three. And I think that might even only o- o- operate hourly. Um. And I, um. I, I would add to that, 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 uh, we really. I don't feel that a lot of the answers we've gotten have been terribly clear. And we've gotten different answers at different meetings. Um, so, uh, and. I, I'm not sure that that in and of itself is reason enough to reject this. Um, so I hang my hat on the basis of, of public transportation because I think. Um, that, uh, it, it probably does meet the other requirements of a special permit. Um, so on that basis, um, I would, uh, make a motion to reject.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, and in my second to that motion, I would also like to add, um, in accordance with our responsibilities under. Special permit ad- applications that. Um, I believe that these half-acre lots are inadequate yards, uh, and will not provide. Adequate screening and buffering for the neighbors. I also believe it would have an adverse impact on the neighbors. Um, due to the small lot side and specifically the roadway. Um, in the event that. Uh. Emergency vehicles, um, that I see on a regular basis on my street had to come. Which consists of a red station wagon, I don't know who drives that. Um, a fire engine, a police truck, and an, and a police van and a, uh, ambulance. Um, this road, uh, would definitely not lead itself to being able to turn these vehicles around without having to pull in other people's driveways. So for those reasons, I second, um, Mr. Shulman's motion.
Okay, is there further discussion? Yeah, Tammy?
Uh, yes, if, if we are having discussion, I'd just like to flesh out a couple of ideas, um. With very much respect to the former chair, whose opinion I value. Um. I think somebody that is coming to a care facility is probably not going to be getting there on public transportation. Perhaps the aide that they have might get there on public transportation, so that really doesn't. Concern me, um. I feel like the applicant has given us multiple answers for the same question and. The things that. I guess the septic is adequate. And I, I do know that the driveway is double-wide, that house used to have a two-car garage and half of it has been converted into the living space. So I feel on those two things, the applicant actually does meet the qualification. Um, and. Personally. I think the idea of a group home on a quiet street for somebody who's convalescing is nice, even though it backs up to the Merritt Parkway. But there are way more noisier locations in the city of Norwalk. But I just don't feel like. Our questions have been answered. More about all the practical, the things that. Need to be done in this group home. Well, I think the applicant has good intentions, I'm not completely satisfied that. That is going to happen, so, um. I still haven't decided how I'm going to vote, but I just wanted to put those thoughts out there.
So, I'm still concerned about the septic. You know, we couldn't read the survey that came out over email today, and it did appear to say something about. Enlarged septic or something that I couldn't read, and I don't know if that's something that has been done, will be done, is required to be done. So I still don't feel I have a good, um, feeling about the information we've gotten on septic. Now, I know that the Health Department approved it, but I'm not quite sure what they've approved. And having lived on Highland Avenue when all the septic fields were failing, I think it's a very important point. All right, is, is there any other further discussion?
Um, I feel that the applicant has addressed. Many of the concerns that we put towards her and her husband over the last three. Meetings. True, there has been some, you know. Uh, I'll say cloudiness. Um, and some of the responses that, that maybe needs a little bit more parsing. But she has another level of compliance to get through. And, and, and I feel that, you know, she's already achieved the key points that we, we require.
All right. If there's no further discussion. If nobody has any further discussion, anything further they want to say. I think we'll move forward on a vote. On the motion before us, and it's a motion.
I'll, I'll pull up the, a resolution for you guys to, to take a look at, just based on like the comments, and see if we can do that.
Bring in the food in a few minutes.
Richard, I was trying to summarize your, your comments, I'm not sure if I. Is accurate of a job as. You would want.
Good, good enough. No, I did, I did say, and I don't believe the road, um, is adequate for the. Emergency vehicles.
Um. Commissioner Rowena. Um, I would just say to that, that anybody living on any residential street in Norwalk could call for an ambulance or an emergency service vehicle. Or a fire truck, and they would have to deal with the road that they're given, so.
I absolutely agree with that, uh, Tammy. But in this instance, we're not talking about a resident, um, calling, we're talking about a business. With three residents that will probably need those services more than anybody else on the street. I, I, I don't, I think it's apples and oranges, but I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any suggestions for this, uh, resolution? Are we all comfortable with the resolution? As it's currently drafted?
Uh, my screen is kind of stuck.
Now, Brian, number one says that we have not received adequate. Documentation about the septic system, it seems like we have. Do we need to take item one off?
Yeah, it, it can be reworded, I know Ms. Linkowski still, uh, suggested that. She doesn't feel that the plans that were provided were. She wasn't legible enough for her to make the determination that they, they'd comply, so I'm trying to kind of. Satisfy that comment while. Meeting, uh.
Brian.
Were submitted, they were not, uh. Sufficiently legible to be understood by all commissioners?
But, um. Galen, I did send Brian an email saying, after I received that document today, that I couldn't really read what it said either. And I asked him in the group email if he could clarify, and I'm pretty sure he responded to everybody that it did meet the requirement. That, I don't know, Di- Diane, if you were able to see that email this afternoon?
I, I did see it, but it was, I wasn't quite sure what the requirement was, i- is it three beds that's a requirement?
Yeah, based on the, the testimony provided, um. That the Health Department was based on the three bedrooms within the rest home portion, and then the two bedrooms within the caretaker's quarters. And then whether it provides you with a sense of, um. I guess. Clarity is that. if you were to, whether, however you act on the application, whether you approve or deny, the applicant would still have to, so say you approve the application, the applicant would still have to go through the typical zoning and building permit process. So they'd have to finally obtain a building permit. And the building permit cannot be issued until the health department officially signs off on the application. So at some point, the health department is going to review or re-review septic plans to confirm compliance with all applicable health codes. And until that point, the applicant would not be able to use the property as they proposed. Because obviously their goal is to obtain a building permit and a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, that helps. And I just want to add, there's a fairly decent turnaround at the cul-de-sac on that road.
Brian, I still, is number one still?
Yeah, let me just strike that.
It says the section, you know, of the warning regulations, documentation has not been provided to the satisfaction of the commission that the onsite septic system. We have received documentation that the onsite septic system meets the health department's
I think you could delete this.
But Brian, before you, before you delete that, you know, I, I'm in my home office right now. So I don't, I forgot to bring the printout that I did at my office. But what, what was the last revised plan? Because I, I would bet that I saw one that showed two rec rooms and one bedroom in the caretaker area.
No, you're, you're correct. So the floor plan had that two recreation rooms labeled, so one in the caretaker's quarters and then one in the rest home portion.
Because I thought that was what accompanied your email saying that the health department was
Right, that is, yeah. That is what was submitted to us. And I believe that is what was submitted to the health department. And the applicant testified that the health department approved three bedrooms in the rest home quarters and two in the caretaker's quarters.
Yeah, that, the other one was mislabeled.
No, I don't know that it was mislabeled, but.
What did the, the health department's approval say?
They didn't provide a written approval. I spoke with Sean Duffy, who's a sanitarian at the health department via phone call. And he stated to me verbally that the health department approved those plans verbally. So he didn't provide a written approval, but for what it's worth, he did say that they would sign off on the, on the plans.
Did he say five bedrooms?
Yeah, that's with those plans.
Right, he didn't, he did not confirm with me a number of bedrooms.
The plans didn't show five bedrooms.
Right, if I would interpret his approval based on the floor plan submitted by the applicant.
Which was the one that didn't show five bedrooms?
Correct, that would be the one with the recreation rooms, the two recreation rooms.
But didn't she testify that one of the recreation rooms was a bedroom?
Yes.
This is very unclear in terms of what the health department really, what Sean Duffy really has approved.
Right, can you, I'm sorry, can you, when is the, so you, so the hearing's closed, right? So you don't have to vote tonight and you still have clock available. So the here, so why don't we just continue the the vote to the next meeting and then just get clarification from the health department on that issue and put it back on the next agenda for a vote.
That sounds like a very good idea to me. And we still have a motion on the floor. So at the next meeting, we continue with the motion that's on the floor, which was to deny the application.
Yeah, or I don't know, like perhaps you could withdraw the, withdraw the motion for now and then just start again at when you get that item clarified.
Can, Steve, can we ask from that health department to be very specific? And is this the existing septic system? Or is this a proposal for a new and enlarged septic system?
Yeah, we can certainly email them and get something from, back from them on that.
Okay, thank you. I think it would help.
Okay, Lou, how do you feel about withdrawing your motion until the next meeting?
I think I'd be comfortable with that, but I'm not sure that even if we get a different answer on the number of bedrooms, that I would feel differently. But I'm, I, I don't see any harm in withdrawing my motion.
Okay, so you can make the motion again at the next meeting, of course. Okay, so Lou has agreed to withdraw his motion. And we will carry this over until the next meeting. And we will get documentation from Sean Duffy about what exactly he has approved for the septic system. So that we could consider that clearly at the next meeting. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, just make sure that his, what he tells us is very specific.
Yes, exactly how many bedrooms and where the bedrooms are.
Right, and is it the existing septic system? Or is it a new expanded septic system? Because I don't think the application really answers that question.
Okay. Yep. Good. Okay, so I think we are, we are all in agreement. And we can move on.
Okay.
And the remaining item on the agenda, those are the remaining items on the agenda, is the capital budget. It's FY 2025-2026 capital budget report and recommended action. We have all reviewed the capital budget. And we would now return it to the common council with our recommendation. Is there any discussion? I did not read the capital budget.
This was that letter that we typically send to the, to the mayor, which kind of just outlines what we find in terms of consistency with the requests with the P O C D. And then usually what we've been doing is putting in, if you have any specific capital budget requests that you find particularly important or aligning particularly well with the P O C D, that we would highlight those that the mayor and the common council and B E T are aware that those items are specifically important to the planning and zoning commission.
Brian, just to clarify, this is not the letter where we would ask for like funding of the parking study, because that was not one of the things in the capital budget. Is that right?
I think you could put it in there to say that that, that's something that should be a capital request or that you'd like to see as a capital request going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see that. I'm not sure if anybody else would like to have that included.
We need to get a parking study designed so we know what the parking study is that we're asking for.
Okay.
Which I think is in progress, right, Steve?
Sort of, I'll fill you in tomorrow.
Alrighty.
Then I can pull up the, the letter too, real quick. Technically, we're making a motion. So I know at the, the hearing, I believe it was Mr. Cantor brought up, possibly a few other folks brought up the East Avenue Corridor Improvements Project as being particularly important. So we highlighted that one here. I left this here, if anyone had any other suggestions, but other than that, it's pretty straightforward. Nothing, nothing was found to be inconsistent. So pretty short letter to Mayor Rilling.
Okay, this is the entire letter?
Yeah, so it just kind of outlines. And then just a quick motion and what you, what you find.
I would just like to say, I did spend quite a bit of time reviewing it and I made some notes. And for the life, I can't find where I put them, so I'm annoyed with myself.
That's frustrating.
And I did it, what, three weeks ago? So now I don't really remember everything that it was. So anyway, I'm just going to not make any comment.
Does anybody else have any comment that we would want to insert into this letter? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Wait a minute, I'm still trying to locate that info. Did you post that? Did you repost that, Brian?
This letter?
Yes.
Uh, no, it was just sent as part of the application, agenda package.
It's blank, though, when you, when you look at tonight's agenda, Brian, the link under capital budget says no attachment. And it was a huge file and Steve sent it to us.
Saying that, you know, it bounced back.
Right.
Which is why I didn't get a chance to read it.
Yeah, it really takes a long time to review it. It's a bear.
Yeah.
Fortunately, this letter, though, is fairly short. JJ, would it help to like scroll up and just review this letter quickly? Is that what you're looking for or are you looking for?
That's what I'm, I'm looking through the files right now. Okay, but you know what?
Steve, do you remember the date you sent that to us? Do you have it?
I don't, I don't recall actually sending.
I thought you sent it to us and then it was so big, a lot of us couldn't open it. And then you resent it in a different way.
I, I'm sorry, I do not.
Budget itself, but I'm looking for the letter. Is the letter a separate attachment? That's what I'm looking for.
The letter that's on the screen right now, JJ? It's on the screen now, you can read it.
I don't have that visibility. I, mind you, I do have some other programs open, but I'm looking at the Zoom screen and where you usually share it. I don't see it. That's what I'm looking for.
One of us could just read it to you, JJ.
Okay, go ahead, read it.
You want me to?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, I can see it. Okay, so it says honorable Mayor Rilling. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025/26 capital budget at their February
Was hiding. Okay, okay, so I just moved the other screen down, okay? So I do see on February 19, 2025, I see it, okay.
Glad I didn't have to read the whole thing.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I was just asking. Movements, yes, okay. Inside of the clause here. Resolutions, okay, okay, I see it, thank you.
And nobody had any clause to insert there?
Right.
So I was asking for a motion to approve the letter as written without an inserted clause? Seem to have a clause to insert?
So moved, Galen.
Okay, is there a second?
Mrs. Chapin, all second.
Okay. Let's do a roll call, vote and see if we are all willing to vote to send this letter as written without any additional inserts to the man.
No, no, no insert clause, clause.
Sure. Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langalis?
Yes.
Ms. Linkowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Okay. So now we move on to the discussion phase of our, of our meeting. And the first discussion, subject for discussion is capital budget role. Would anyone like to start off, start that discussion off? What should the role of the planning commission be in the capital budget?
Sorry, I muted myself there for a second. So I had put some, I hope you guys can see my screen. A while back, I had put some change together and I, I don't think I resent this out in advance of the meeting. So I'm sorry about that. Now, so I can just walk you through this really quickly and email it back out. And if you'd like to put it back on on the agenda, we could go back through it again and, and see if it has any merit to the changes or not. So what you see up there at the top is the existing wording and down below, which I'll scroll to, are some proposed edits. And some of that process, you're, you're sort of following now. There's language in there, just clarifying, the first one is the references, the master plan for the physical development of the city. I'm just, you know, it's the plan of conservation development. The existing ordinance calls for you to look at plans, sketches, layouts and surveys. That's not really what your role was previously or what you do presently. So it seems like that text is unnecessary. The text in red, beginning with in addition, basically is giving, you know, it's not really giving you additional authority, but maybe gives you some added emphasis to the mayor to consider that, you know, that the items that you're advocating for or items you feel are inappropriate for this particular capital budget may have a little more weight because you're not actually providing a budget. You're just, just weighing in your opinions on the appropriateness of some of these requests that are in there. And one thing I'm trying to do is I, I think, and we got, it was a little better this year than what happened in the past, was the, the public hearing in the past, if you remember, you know, sometimes you would get numerous, you know, folks coming out and advocating for their particular project. When it, your ability to affect the, the acceptance of that item into the budget really is limited. So I, I think the key thing I'm jumping at a little bit, but is saying may hold a hearing. So it's not saying you have to hold a hearing, which you're required to now, which I think the, in my opinion, the hearing is unnecessary. I, I did think that, you know, which didn't do this year, which I think you could do is, you know, the process where committee members or commission members got together with the various city departments and reviewed the requests that were prepared and got the explanation for things, I think has some value to it because it does play into what you guys do long term in terms of planning. And also gives you some familiarity with some of the special appropriations. And sometimes with some of the eight twenty fours that come in, so you have some knowledge of like the bigger picture things that these departments are looking at. So I think that's something you guys can consider having again. Or if those requests are already being proposed to say B E T or different committees of council, perhaps we can piggyback on those meetings to sit in and just listen and potentially ask questions at those times as well. So that, that's kind of the tracks of the changes with that. And I just pushed the date back to give you guys a little more time. You know, we do, because we do have a deadline to get that to the mayor. But that's kind of a quick overview of the changes. But I, what I'll do is I can email this out tomorrow if you guys take another look at it. We can put it back on a, a follow-up agenda to see if you think it has merit to propose to the ordinance committee, who are ultimately going to be the folks that have to decide whether this is a change they want to pursue or not pursue.
Okay.
Steve, when you send that out, could you please resend the capital budget? Because I don't know why I can't find it in my email.
Okay, yeah, we can figure that out. And if, yeah, if, worst case, I'll see if it's posted and I can send the link to that, that way.
Oh, that'd be great. And maybe I can find it on the city website too, but it's always better.
I, I didn't look if it was posted yet or not, but I, that would
Okay, well, I think I am in favor of putting this off to the next meeting so that we can review this and then discuss it again. Does anybody have any, for any contrary feeling about this? Okay, good. I guess that's our decision. Unless somebody speaks up. And the next item on our, our agenda are the zoning regulation amendments. Steve O'Brien, who's going to walk us through that?
That's me again, soon as I can find them. Okay, I got it. Okay. Do you need me to blow that up for you?
Yeah, please.
So that, and then these two I would put on the, consider them on the, on the minor side of things. We had a couple different requests for folks who, and they come in all shapes and sizes with this. It's about motor vehicle storage indoors. Um, sometimes it boils down to somebody who's got a large car collection, which they can be, you know, usually they're kind of high-end vehicles. Um, and then we also are working with an applicant now, which you're probably going to see pretty soon for a very high-end, large facility where they store, you know, hundreds of um, kind of classic and high-end cars and it, that, that's part of a club. And they have, you know, they might have showroom space there. They might have like an event space in that. So you have a couple of different spectrums of what these things can encompass. And so, you know, we ran into the issue with somebody looking for just a small space to kind of store some of their vehicles and where they could do that. Um, and the problem is the existing regulations. Um, sorry, jump. Existing regulations list the, um, use twice. So it, it's kind of a problem when it's listed twice in there contrary to each other. Why is my? Yeah, for some reason, at least on my screen, my.
It's flipping back and forth.
We can't see the images either. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. They were there when I started to share and now they, let me, let me try to reshare that again. I'm assuming it went out with the, the, the document that I, that was with the packet had that in there. Let me find that again.
All right, let's see, you want me to just pull it up real quick?
Yeah, if you could, that might be a little quicker that way. Okay, yeah, that's.
Oh, that's a much more size too. Good going.
Yeah, so as I was saying, the motor vehicle storage is listed twice. It's listed in the, oh, if you just go up a little bit, Brian. It's listed in the industrial uses and also in the automotive uses. And for some reason, it's kind of, um, categorized a little differently between the two. And then the trickier part is that in the automotive uses, it's a special permit use in the light industrial zone. And then with some limitations and then under the industrial, it's a special permit use in the light and the heavy, but then there's no limitations with it. So it seems like there's just a little bit of disconnect there. So what I proposed is to, oh, if you scroll down a little bit, Brian, is to A, modify the, the definition of motor vehicle storage. So the, uh, it's really dealing with outdoor motor vehicle storage. And then if you're storing anything indoors, it's really a warehouse use. And so long as they're not doing, um, private repairs, you know, auto body sales, that would trigger, you know, oversight from the state as well. Then I don't, you know, what does it matter what they're storing inside the warehouse? It wouldn't be any different than, than anything else. Um, and, and talking with Brian a little bit about it too, he's kind of like, why are we even permitting outdoor storage of motor vehicles? Especially in industrialism, seems like a odd, odd use. So another option is to delete any outdoor storage of motor vehicles outside of what people can do accessory to, you know, their house or their, where they live or their business or so forth. But having a separate lot that you just park vehicles on doesn't really seem like, uh, a, a use that makes a lot of sense. So that, those are two options to deal with that.
Sorry, Steve, can I, one question? Does it make you distinguish, uh, any, um, distinction between a uh, passenger car, let's just say, and a truck type vehicle where, you know, a heavy equipment versus a car?
Yeah, that's a good point because the regulations already indicate where you can park commercial vehicles. So that wouldn't be impacted by any of these changes. You'd still be allowed to do that where that's permitted today.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and the second change was dealing with vocational schools. You might remember, uh, the twenty-five Van Zant approval that was pretty painful to go through. We came up with a bunch of rules about what they could do on their facility in terms of, uh, you know, putting in a trade school. Um, and we've had a couple of different inquiries about smaller scale things like, uh, you know, maybe they're doing something, you know, with, with ten students and you know, could they do that in other zones? At what point do you trigger, um, something that's really going to be impactful in terms of traffic and parking and those kinds of things. So put together some, uh, recommendation changes to allow vocational schools in some other zones and then put in some triggers about when it has to go to the commission for approval and then what type of approval is required, uh, based off that. So basically allowing trade and vocational schools, um, in, in many of the, excuse me, many of the commercial zones. And some of the criteria that are already limitations for the vocational schools now carried forward. So one and two are existing regulations today. So we're proposing just to carry those forward. Um, but we're looking at things a little differently in terms of before it was like regulating it ba- based off lot area, which I, you know, in hindsight, I don't think was the best approach. So what we're saying now is if you have a, a, a space in total between the entire building, because you could have multiple tenants in a, in a building, is if you, the school area doesn't exceed ten thousand square feet within that building, and that could be all the schools, then that would just be approval, um, as of right. But then when you get above the, um, you know, to that ten to twenty range, you could need a site plan approval and then above twenty could, uh, trigger that special permit. So that, that's some changes we thought made sense and, and we're a way to kind of allow smaller users who, you know, in our opinion, aren't going to be overly impactful on, on things to operate. And then when you get to a stage where they're above ten thousand square feet, that's when the commission will get involved in looking at uh, impacts related to traffic and parking, make sure the location works. And then when you get above twenty thousand square feet, that's getting into a much larger facility and, and probably a special permit would be appropriate at that stage. So that, that's how we're at least recommending it at this stage and, you know, based on feedback we get from you guys.
Yeah, so this should just say site plan. That's the only, that's pretty site plan and then.
Yeah, sorry, there's a typo there. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, yeah.
In yellow, propose schools with an aggregate total floor area of ten thousand and then it has twenty thousand. Square, is that a typo?
Copy and paste, copy and paste something.
Yeah, so it, it should be under ten, ten to twenty and then above twenty.
Yeah, so this should say twenty and then that should say site plan and then everything's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought I had somebody proofread this, but apparently that didn't.
I don't know if you sent this one to me, so.
Well, as amended, yeah, I, I agree with that. Um, I, I do have a question on the, the parking side. Um, I don't know if anybody has a question on this before we jump back to that other one though.
Let's scroll.
Yeah, um, so one of the, the things you mentioned at, at the end there was about whether or not we should, um, permit the outdoor storage of motor vehicles, um, which would only be allowed, um, in the light industrial area by special permit limitation. Um, yeah, we, we don't have a lot of land dedicated to the light industrial. Um, so, you know, I'd be in favor of not having outdoor storage of motor vehicles. I, I'm not sure how others feel about that. Um.
Well, what they need to have motor vehicles outdoor, you know, I mean.
Think about the other meeting with the, the applicant for, um, Jason Milligan and the parking down there by the courthouse where the, uh, Ford dealership has all those cars stored in the parking garage. Where would they go? And is that treated differently because it's an auto dealership? I know they couldn't park a hundred and eighty cars on the street, nor would they want to, but.
Sure, yeah, I, I, I noticed that, uh, just above it, you scroll up just a bit, Brian. In that definition, it said that it excluded parking lots and parking structures. Um, maybe it'd be good to get some clarification about like what that, that specific use would be. Would that be use of a parking structure for storage or, uh, like the, the parking structure, I guess, would be a principal use, right? Um, so yeah, I, I, I guess maybe a little bit of, uh, clarification around that would help, uh, help better understand whether or not it makes sense for us to evaluate removing the outdoor storage.
Yeah, I, I always think of like this one is uh, probably a few years ago, at this point, we had some, someone come in and say we wanted to store, you know, the town of Westport Public School buses in Norwalk and we pretty much told them no. Um, doesn't sound like a great use. Like that's what kind of this is when I think of this use is kind of what that's getting at. So you're kind of taking an industrial property and just using it to store vehicles on, um.
Okay.
So yeah.
So that could be uh, a use safe for like an auto dealership storing, uh, extra, uh, like inventory, um, in such a site.
Yeah, and I think your point, um, Chapin is a good one about the amount of industrial land, which when Brian brought up, maybe just eliminating, I said, yeah, you know what? Probably makes sense to do because again, like a, the, the two examples, a, a, a car dealer who just needs places to park stuff. You know, it might not be overly impactful in terms of things that people be worried about, but at the same time, it's not the best use of land that could be for something else, I, I would say.
Yeah, I, I just see that the light industrial is, uh, limited and I, I wonder if there's others that might be, um, like better uses of the land, uh, at, at minimum from like a, uh, tax perspective for the city, right? To bring in more revenue for the city for that land.
I'm in favor of that, Chapin.
Okay, so where are we on this?
Uh, so i- i- you know, if you think these are, you know, based on the, the tweaks we just talked about with some of the language I messed up there. Um, think these are worthwhile, we can, you know, put the amendments together and do the referrals and put them on a future agenda for a public hearing and, and see what the public thinks and then you guys can go from there.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds like a plan to me. Is everybody in agreement with that? Does anybody have any further thoughts?
Um, based on the public, uh, feedback we hear, we can decide whether or not we want to strike the outdoor storage, right? That's not something we have to decide on before this gets posted.
Um, it would be better to have your preference on which direction to go.
Okay.
I think, you know, I don't, I don't know if it, it's, you know, if, if you decided at the meeting to strike it, I think that would be appropriate too, but you know, whatever you feel, I think would work either way.
Does anyone feel strongly one way or the other?
No, I think people need, they're in situations where they need outdoor storage of, of motor vehicles. So I have.
Three years ago, I bought a car from a local dealer and the salesman drove me to a, one of the parking lots they rented. And in that ride, he told me, this is, um, eight years ago, that the dealer spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month on renting parking spaces off-site.
Ow.
Ow.
That's amazing.
Hmm, I was amazed.
Okay, so we will move forward with this. Suggest, do you have any further thoughts, Chapin? I don't want to, you know, catch you off at the.
No, no, I was just curious to see what other people thought. So yeah, happy to keep it in for now. We'll see what the public says.
Okay.
Weeks, yeah.
Okay, so our next item is the acceptance of minutes. Uh, the minutes of the February fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move.
Okay, a second? Ten seconds? All those in favor, raise your hand. I think we can do it this way.
I just have a quick, I just have a quick amendment. So it said that I didn't come to the meeting until six forty-three, but I actually was there at the beginning. I had to leave early. So that's the only thing.
Okay.
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 A move is modified, yes.
Okay, so we will vote again, vote minutes as amended. Everybody in favor of the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Uh, comments of the director? Do you have comments, Steve?
Um, no, real quick, I, I think, you know, we're going to have to keep seeing these little tweaks to the, the regulations. We have a couple on the flood zone regits, you know, these are staff-generated ones. And I think we keep getting a little inquiries about stuff. I think one thing is going on is that the old regulations had almost no definitions. So everything was kind of like you just fit it in, which sort of worked, I guess. Now we have very specific and a lot of definitions. And so sometimes we're finding things that don't quite match up. So we're trying to just right-size things and we're, you know, we're, we're kind of getting some of these like, well, is this something that makes sense citywide or is this something that's benefiting just an individual? So when we, we decide, you know, okay, these seem to make sense for everyone. We, we don't, we, we don't mind authoring them. But if somebody thinks this is something more just beneficial for them, then we'll probably say you need to proceed with the amendment on your own, follow that process and, and let them go through it.
Yeah, we're working towards more clarity. So, um, those definitions and such. So thank you both. And to the staff, yeah.
Yeah, that's it's a process that will never end.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, sometimes you really go, well, this is what we meant to say, but it's not what that says.
Yeah, I, I think the, um, the other one, I think we're going to have another discussion on some, probably won't be for like a year, would be the, uh, some of the changes we made to the two families because we, we approved some, we got some permits in and approved them under a cou- a couple of different variations we've made. And I really want to see what they look like. So if they look okay, then great. If not, then we're, we might be back to the drawing board with some of those changes.
Yeah, let's hope they look all right.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, comments of commissioners? Does any commissioner have a comment?
You, you know that I've been hassling Steve meeting after meeting, uh, about a couple of, uh, minor issues. One of them being, um, that lighting feature at the Sono, um, uh, mall. Um, and, um, Steve has looked into that, uh, and found that that, um, lighting unit is, uh, indeed working. Um, the next one, which he's, uh, started to, uh, get an answer to is, uh, the waterfall at the Pearl, which, uh, as I observe, has not been operating for at least a year and maybe longer. And I think that they got a fairly substantial, uh, increase in, um, uh, the, uh, size of the Pearl based on putting that in, which itself is ridiculous. At least it ought to be operating. Um, so I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate that, uh, uh, Steve is, uh, beginning to address those issues.
We're on, we're on.
Good. Good. Well, if there are no other, uh, comments of commissioners, uh, how, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, Richard moves.
A second.
J- JJ seconds? All those in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Cut it in just under the wire, almost eight o'clock.